I'll make a motion to accept the agenda presented.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Okay, motion made by Supervisor Bridges, second by Supervisor Alva. Is there anybody from the public who would like to comment on that? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion passes. Okay, at this time, is there, we're gonna open it up to a public comment for items that are not on the agenda. And, uh... So, my first speaker is Bill.
Good morning, Bill Pyer, Lassen County Fair Manager. Um, I don't want to take a lot of your time this morning, just wanted to touch on a couple things. First, come on down to the fair. We're having a fair next week, so I'd like to welcome all of you guys to the fair and we'd love to see you there. Um, I want to thank all of our sponsors and all of our volunteers that just spend lots of their own resources, time, money, and support for the fair and just want to shout out to those folks and to thank you. The list is way too long for me to list it off, we'd be here until noon. Um, I'd like to congratulate our grand marshals, Bob and Johnny Hirschberger, and our old-timer, Catherine Wimpel. I'm sure you guys have heard about our clear bag policy. This is something that was asked for in the past and, um, to my knowledge, never, never implemented completely, so I've got some copies of that. If you'd like them, um, I'll leave them here and, um, that way if you have questions or, constituents that are asking questions, you've got it right in front of you. So I'll leave that there. And, again, I'm, I'm not gonna take much of your time. Finally, we had a Fourth of July event in conjunction with the Lassen County Chamber of Commerce this last Friday, and it was a huge success. We, we had families there just enjoying their time and playing volleyball and catch and, and Jenga and the food vendors did well and the races, um, went off without a hitch. They were done on time and had an, an awesome fireworks show. So, um, I just wanted to say a thank you to the Lassen County Chamber of Commerce for that partnership and we look forward to hopefully being able to do that in the future. That's all I've got for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you at the fair.
Yes, sir.
Who's your entertainment this year for the fair?
Entertainment for the fair. Thursday night, we have, um, the CCPRA rodeo in Caleb Montgomery. Friday night, Parmley is headliner and Saturday night is Rodney Atkins. Sunday, we have races and little types derby and demolition derby. Start off the fair Wednesday with the Miss Lassen, Miss Lassen County pageant, so hope y'all can make it.
Good job, Bill.
All right. Thank you. Have a great day.
Okay. Anybody else? Ma'am?
Thank you. Do you want me to fill out a slip?
Uh, just state your name and you'll have three minutes.
Great, thank you. Um, good morning. My name is Brenda Narayan. I'm PG&E's Government Affairs Representative. I, I wanted to, um, first of all, thank you for just the opportunity to be here. Um, I appreciate public comments and I wanted to lend a face to the emails. I know you've received my emails, um, so again, just wanted to lend a face. And I wanted to just let you know that I am Lord's contact for PG&E. PG&E is a large company and, um, my positions, um, aren't limited to the county of Lassen. I have counterparts throughout our service territory. And so my particular role covers Lassen County. I also work with the supervisors in Butte and Plymouth as well, as well, as well as cities throughout those areas. And, um, I just wanted to let you know that I am here to help you on just matters related to PG&E. Again, I know it's a large company, you may have constituent or customer issues. Um, I also invite you to, um, to meet with me and to share your perspectives on PG&E. Um, I know that, um, you may not have had a point of contact in the past, but I definitely want to be that person for you. Um, you also may have questions about PG&E's presence in the community. Reach out to me, I'm happy to help you with that as well. Um, I, I also want to let you know that there's also a critical component to my position, so it's not just being your point of contact, but this is a, um, it's a compliance requirement. So when there are emergencies such as outages, um, we had issues with a transmission, um, some transmission work that we did this March, um, and there are also times when we have planned and unplanned outages. Um, my role is to be that, that person that helps you understand what's going on and why things are the way they are and, um, you, you may have questions about timing and I work closely with my counterpart who's here, Jeff Lee, who's our Public Safety Specialist that also works with your, your team. Um, and my position becomes activated when our EOC is activated. So again, it's, it's an important role and I am your point of contact for that as well. Um, I mentioned, um, uh, in just kind of an illustration, so this past March, of course, you knew that there were some issues with our, our transmission line and our transmission work and I was the person who posed contact with your CAO and Supervisor Scanlon when that happened. Um, and, and my position's on the ground, so I actually work closely with our operations team to be able to help you understand what's happening and to be able to, to convey your concerns as well. And I, I just want to close by saying that, um, I, I look forward to returning to Lassen and would welcome the opportunity to meet with, with you one-on-one. And I do say that heartfelt. And I'm just, I truly am here with sincerity to be a partner and to, to have this relationship with you and with your community. Um, so with that, I, I brought some cards and I'd like to, to share these with you if possible, if I can share them with the clerk and, um...
I could take them.
Yeah, and again, just wanted to say hello and to make sure you know who I am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it possible for Pete to come back and talk more and get on the agenda and come back where we can visit with you?
Absolutely.
We have a presentation that would be awesome. Would there be a question?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Only one of your, one of the cards.
Get him on.
Okay, next person, off.
I noticed, I noticed you took the pretty girl before me.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't blame you. Uh, Bob Tindall, I'm, uh, um, the COR for Boy Scouts, the Suthville Municipal Airport Commissioner and, uh, Chairman of the Commission and, uh, today, um, I'm American Legion District Three Commander. I have Butte, Sierra, Modoc and Lassen County. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to address all of you. I've, I've filled in Supervisor Bridges. Pete has sat in on some of our meetings I'm about to discuss with you. And, and basically veterans have been approached, um, by the group that was unable to, uh, go through with the purchase of the CRF. So they're now looking at Veterans Hall, which is kind of a win-win. There's lots of, uh, if your minds like mine, the first time, first time I heard this, I'm thinking, okay, the city and the county working together on a project. How often does that happen? Successful? I don't know. Uh, we need to sit down, if we're going to do this, we need to sit down and talk about it, discuss it. The city at this moment is not very receptive to it, to say the least. Four out of five, um, they're not having a good year over there. Uh, it didn't get any better this past week. Um, we're hoping that once we go, we wanted you to know before we start going public, before we start going to Sam and, and others in the media, before we go to Facebook, we think there's a groundswell that wants to see this happen. And of course, the county would benefit and the city would benefit. They've got $450,000 of grant money that's not budgeted and all of a sudden they have debt, uh, at least 450,000. So, um, it's an uphill battle. Uh, it's gonna be a long slog, but we wanted to let you guys know. Again, thank you for allowing me to address this. And Pete is aware, we've asked Pete to do a task force meeting so we can fill in the task force, but the city knows, now you guys know, the task force will know and from here on out we're going to help. Thank you for this time, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there anybody else that would like to have any more public comment this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment and move on to un-adjourned reports. Mr. Enger, you want to start us off?
Sure, I want to start by, uh, wishing everybody a happy Fourth of July. Hope everybody enjoyed their time off. Uh, during the time off, we have the South County Food Pantry. Um, we're still working with the county, uh, as far as working together on a permanent solution moving forward with getting more presence in the outlying areas of Lassen County. Uh, I wanted to reiterate what Bill said, we have the fair next week and Wednesday night, uh, I'll be sponsoring the 4H and FFA Pizza Dinner, 25 extra large pizzas from the Pizza Factory. And I wanted to thank Jeff Chu for giving me another great price on that. At 6:00 PM, we're all gonna meet with all the kids that are sacrificing FFA and 4H camping at fair and hopefully it'll help the parents. Uh, one, fair's a stressful time, at least alleviate one dinner during fair week. As a second year I'm doing it, so hopefully I have a little bit better of a turnout. Um, also, there was a couple instances in the South County and I'd like to thank Silas for all his help. No matter what time I call him, he always answers the phone and always has great answers whether, uh, the fires cow fires, whether it's BLMs or whatever the drama that's going on, he always steps up and, uh, I want to give him a huge shout out for always being there. And a room on fire could have been a lot worse if it wasn't for the efforts of Silas. And that's about all I got. Thank you, Tom.
Thanks. Mr. Alva?
Yeah, uh, I want to thank Bill for the good work he's doing at the fair and invite everybody to attend the fair this next week. Down there, it'll be a fun time, it'll be a good one. You didn't do it, etc. This, uh, I don't know when it was, a couple weeks ago, had the RCRC meeting, it was up in Alturas, it was the County of the Chair, as Jerry Byrne was Chairman there. Wednesday night, they had a reception. It was very nice to see my counterparts there, Mr. Henry and Mr. Bridges come up and I've got to meet some of the supervisors and the staff from RCRC. On that night, I challenged Rex Bone from Humboldt County to an oyster cook-off because of, when we were there, he cooked oysters for everybody and so, anyway, I challenged him oyster cook-off. So he brought up his ocean oysters and I provided the mountain oysters and we had a big barbecue and by golly, I won. So, Lassen County's on the map from nothing else for a mountain oyster cook-off. So anyway, uh, then on the, the next day, they took a tour, so we went over to Surprise Valley to the hot springs, we talked about geothermal, uh, talked about ranching, uh, some of the issues facing them, the public lands. Uh, then after, we went up to the Devil's Corral, the Wild Horse Corral, it's, uh, the largest Forest Service facility for wild horses. We talked about wild horses. Mr. Crowfoot, or not Crowfoot, but not bottom, he was there for all day for the tour, so I got a chance to visit with him, so one-on-one, he was also there Wednesday night for a brief um, so that was good. We talked about some of the predator issues and some of the pigs of life, but it went out good. Uh, Wade Crowfoot, he did join us after Wild Horse Corral, so he got to see that. He's the Secretary for the Natural Resources here in California and he spoke at the board meeting the next day and, uh, so we had, got to have, he took lots of questions, gave lots of information and of course, I got to give him my two cents worth. But at the end of that, it's very, uh, it's good to see him making some movement on the predatory issues, knowing with the wolves, the lions and the bears. And he actually encouraged RCRC to put up a, uh, ad hoc, you know, the predator issues, uh, working closer in conjunction with them. And, uh, of course, naturally I volunteered for that. I was asked to be on that committee, so that's, that's a good thing. So the, uh, I think it's gonna be Michael Cobb, sir, from Siski County, who's really up to speed on this stuff, who'll be a good asset. Kevin Goswell, Cleveland, and I think Ray Adams from Sierra. And I'm not sure who else, but I think John, John from San Luis Obispo County. Anyway, so that was it. Uh, if anybody has some good photos, we're getting ready for the photo contest, uh, for their calendars, so if anybody has some good photos, get ahold of me and we'll get, uh, get you entered in that if you want to. Uh, we did talk about some of the legislative issues coming up, you know, of course, SRS is, is out for the year. They're a year behind, so we'll start it this year, but anyway, next year it's gonna be out, so we're gonna have a little tighter budget constraints, we'll have discussion about that, etc. So, other than that, I guess that was kind of pretty much the highlights and hope that's all.
So did they appreciate our letters that you delivered?
I handed them to Wade, he was more receptive than what Mr. Bottom was, but, you know, oh, well.
He thought...
He probably better at reading.
Hey Mike, you wanted to...
On the 24th, I attended the Alastair-Modoc County Foot Control and Water Conservation District Special Meeting in Beaver, along with all you guys, and we approved the 2025-26 budget. Uh, on the 26th, I had a conversation with a new member of our community who recently moved here, uh, from Reno and he had taken his family on a family hike out to the, um, Olson Barn, you know, on Chester. And as he was loading his wife and the four kids back into the vehicle, uh, they spotted a wolf, uh, less than a hundred yards away from where they'd been just a few minutes prior. And, um, and I'm just curious, I'll ask the sheriff maybe after the meeting if there's a mechanism for reporting encounters versus, you know, cattle, you know, depredation, that kind of stuff, but...
Human, uh...
Human encounters of different kinds, but, uh, anyway, uh, he was pretty surprised by that.
Yeah.
And, uh, and I've had a contact with another constituent, uh, had another contact or near contact, I should say, with, uh, in Janesville, on the Janesville grade. And so, uh, two, two reports in, in less than a few weeks of that kind of activity. I also, on, uh, July 1st, attended a special meeting of the Lassen Regional Solid Waste Management Association, uh, and we approved the stopgap budget for 2025-26 pending approval of a permanent budget. And then on, uh, also on, uh, July 1st, I attended the first Lassen County Planning Commission meeting of the year and was pleased to see a few of the projects that are moving forward, through that process. On, uh, July 3rd, I attended the CSAC California Budget Training Overview via Zoom and that was thoroughly depressing. We talked a lot about, uh, budget cuts and, uh, money that's not coming, so, um, on the 4th, I enjoyed the, the Chester Parade for the Fourth of July with my family. And then on the 5th, I participated in the Paul Bunyan Days Parade in Westwood, uh, smiling like, a lot of fun. And then I also attended the, um, um, the festival afterwards and watched all the events there and it was good to see our sheriff, John McGarva, and another deputy there as well, and it was a great event. And then, um, yesterday I met with a constituent from District 1 regarding issues, uh, with the group home in District 1 that they've requested help with, and so I'll be doing some follow-up on that, too. That's it for me.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I also attended, which we all did, the Lassen-Modoc Flood, uh, Control and Water Conservation District meeting and approved a budget. And then on the 25th, went up to, uh, Alturas and attended RCRC Golden State Natural Resources meeting and it had to do with the, uh, pellet mill that's gonna be coming to Lassen County. That was, that was an interesting meeting. And I have to congratulate Aaron on his win for the oysters. I ate both kinds and the one from the ocean almost came back up. And yours were delicious, so you deserve that win. I want to hats off to the community and to Bill for the fireworks. I was invited to a dinner at Bruce Davies' house. I've never been to a, a catered Fourth of July barbecue before. And he lives up on a hill and we can see the fireworks and beautiful view and it was just a real nice evening. I hope everybody had a good Fourth of July. Next week's fair week and don't forget to get your 4H dinner tickets. It goes for a good cause. Those kids work hard, it's a, it's a good tri-tip dinner or chicken and, uh, we'll see you at the fair. That's it.
Thank you. So, um, yeah, uh, we had a meeting with, uh, about the PSA 2, uh, uh, dinner with, uh, and, uh, I thought that all went well. We're still making baby steps to move forward to have Congregate Meals, but, uh, hopefully we'll, uh, get that going. And, uh, and then on, uh, July 4th, then I, I, uh, saw the fireworks and, and the, that was a, a great show and, and there was a lot of people in, in town for, for that event. And, uh, then on the 5th, I, uh, attended the Spalding, uh, parade up there and that is a great event every year. And, uh, so that's, that's all I have. Okay. So, we are going to move to, uh, C1?
Mr. Chairman, do you want to take a quick recess while they, uh, oh, sorry, that's him. Never mind. That was the demonstration. He'll be quick.
This one, take off. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Don Willis, County Surveyor. Uh, I'm here this morning because our department would like to make a few minor changes to two sections within Chapter 16.32 of the County Code, which is the chapter that addresses subdivision improvement requirements. And we'd also like to add a, an hourly rate charge to the County Surveyor review fees that are in Section 3.18.130 and I'll talk about those after I talk about the, the changes in Title 16. Title 16 is the county subdivision ordinance and most of you probably recall that we've updated this entire title back in October of 2022 since it hadn't had a major update in over 30 years. Since then, that update has been working very well and there's just a couple of minor tweaks that we'd like to make this time, just to make it work even better. So one of the sections we'd like to improve is, uh, Section 16.32.090, which is where the different road standards are found. And, uh, there are currently five different road types that can be opposed on a parcel, or new parcel being created, uh, depending upon what the circumstances are of that project. And three of those are paved roads and two of them are unpaved. So there are three minor changes in this section we'd like to make. And the first change we'd like to make is to add a requirement to record a private road maintenance agreement for the, for just the paved road types. Currently, the unpaved road types have this requirement, but the paved road types do not. And the reason for this, typically in the past, the paved road types were accepted into the county maintained road system once they were constructed, but that's no longer the case. No roads of any type are being accepted any longer. And so currently, there's no provision for maintenance of any kind for the paved roads. And as you know, paved roads require maintenance just as unpaid roads do, so we'd like to clean that up, get that in there. The second change we'd like to make is there, there's an exception that's within the paved, or the unpaved road types, which allows a subdivision to request a waiver of recording, uh, a maintenance agreement, as long as they do it before they receive conditional approval of the project. Well, this is directly going against what we're asking to do, which is record a maintenance agreement and there really is no compelling reason why a subdivision needs to have this waived since there's only recording fees required, there's no additional fees, so it's, it's pretty minor. But it does ensure that there's some kind of maintenance provision in place and it allows the different owners to share the costs, so there's something in writing that kind of backs that up, so. The last change in that section we'd like to make is, is to eliminate the requirement to record a, a maintenance agreement for a limited access road when there's only a single parcel involved. Now, this is the lowest standard of road, it's an unpaved road and when there's just a single parcel involved, there's really no need to record a shared maintenance agreement because it's just one owner, so it's, it's just kind of unnecessary because that's, basically functions like a driveway, even though it's not a driveway. So then we'd like to clean that up. The last change in Chapter 16.32 is within Section 16.32.100, which is the, the road standard, standard deviation section. We would like to expand upon the exception request that's currently available because the one that's there now is extremely limiting, limiting, almost to the point where it can never occur. It can only be granted if a subdivision is submitted in conjunction with a plan development permit application and a homeowner association is going to be formed, which is in charge of, of the road construction and maintenance, so that, that condition is just so rare. So we would like, and other sections of the County Code provide for exceptions, which are more broadly based, so we'd like to get this section to be more in line with how the other sections are written, so. And the final change we'd like to make is in Section 3.18.130, which is where the review fees for the County Surveyor are found. We would like to add an hourly rate charge for any reviews of the survey maps listed in that section that told of more than two. When more than two reviews are required, the county is subsidizing the cost of this for that additional time. And that, this is how the plan check fees works in the Building Department for the engineering plans and it works pretty well up there, so we thought we'd try it with this. Because right now, it's just costing time and money when we have to do two, three, four, five reviews to, and really, there's no reason that a, a surveyor can't get a map done with two reviews. The regulations are not that prudent, so. So this would allow the county to cover at least a portion of its, of its cost. Even though we could probably raise the initial review fees, we really don't want to do that at this time because we, we want to encourage land surveyors to file their maps so that, well, to the general public, because then they have access to them. And it does help future surveying costs in a given area because there's already a survey there and it's of record, so other surveyors can use it. So that's kind of what we're looking at, just to, if it takes more than two reviews, we want to kick in that hourly rate charge. It, it'll incentivize land surveyors to hopefully do a better job with submitting their maps before they get them to the county, so there's not just this back and forth, the, you know, ridiculous comments and that kind of stuff, so. Anyway, that's a quick overview of the proposed changes we're seeking. Your staff letter has a lot more detail, but that's just kind of a quick highlight, so, you know, I thank you for your time and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
So I'll, I'll open up the... So I'll, I'll open up the first technical questions of the board?
Okay. All right. Do you have any questions?
Not a little minute, pretty quick. It all makes sense to me.
Okay. Great.
In here, you have, and the last thing to talk about, the hourly rate. It is, I don't know if you know the answer to that. Does it have to be a set hourly rate, and then how you go about changing that, or is that why you have hourly rate here? What determines that, so we're not, this is not an arbitrary number?
Yeah, I was just looking at that. It's not arbitrary in that it looks like you're doing from the weighted hourly. So maybe you can explain to them that.
It's the current, surveyor's current weighted rate, whatever that is. I don't know what that is personally, but.
It's generally his wage plus another third, over the lights and everything else.
Overhead.
But how would somebody determine what that is, so when they get the bill or whatever, they know it's just not, that they're not getting the hours, they're taking everything that's due?
Oh, well, it's, it, it's probably in there, no? Oh, it's not?
The weighted rate is, Galen Orwood, Planning and Building Services Department, the weighted rate isn't there, but it would be on the invoice. So if someone got an invoice because they had three or four or five reviews of their map, invoice would have what Don Willis' weighted rate is on it. And that could change, if, if tires, another surveyor's hired, the weighted rate would be lower, most likely, and so it'd be lower. But it's whatever the weighted rate of the active county surveyor is.
And, and how would somebody fact-check that to make sure that you're not?
With the county auditor.
I believe that's public information, as far as they know.
It is, but to Aaron's point, maybe, is there a way we could say, as, like, they get available online, or in our, you know, something that, where someone can say, before I go down this road, I need to know what that fee is?
Uh, yes.
We're actively working on a website, so that's a great idea.
Just to put it up there, so, and we could put it in the ordinance to say, and this, this number will appear on the website, but the address.
I mean, I, I see where you're going with this, but at the same time, I don't want to, you know, have to spell it out for fifty dollars, and then every six months, you gotta bring this back again to up, because it changes.
Right, as you say, which will be available online at this address. Maybe we just add that sign, and wouldn't, you could still introduce the link today, but just adding that.
That way we wouldn't have to give it back.
Yeah, so we, we could have it on the website with, with our fees.
And add that in here, that it would appear on the website.
So let's come up with the language we want to add, with how we want to, how to change it, what's being added here.
Well, an hourly rate charge based on the, the, or on, kind of.
Or just add a sentence, the current hourly, the current rate and hourly rate can be found at, and then we'll give the address.
With a query link for whoever's looking, so like.
How about, the current hourly rate can be found at the Planning and Building Services Department portion of the county website.
Okay. Yep.
Are you the one who was the fighter?
Okay. I have to think.
You know, and I, I like how you got your paved, you got your street standards on here, on what the, the diagrams, on what it's gonna take. I think that's always been in there, but it's just nice to see it.
It wasn't before we did the update back in 2022. It was in the back of the, of the ordinance, which was very cumbersome. It's, it's nice to have them all right there, so we're, we're just doing the same thing we did before. But yeah, I agree, it makes it so much nicer.
It's something to look at, yeah.
Yeah, you can go, you can read the language and then say, okay, here's a diagram, but, yeah.
I had a technical comment. Don is so diplomatic about the hourly need, because he's basically, when he's, when you have bad actors, he's doing their work for them, and that is a slippery slope. They start depending on that. And so I just want to compliment Don on how diplomatic he is when he speaks about the necessity for this, so.
So we're hoping it incentivizes land surveyors to do a little better job. It's kind of our goal. We'll see how it turns out.
It's a good step, and it's right, actually.
At least we'll get some of our cost back for, you know, the time and effort we're putting into this.
Anybody else?
I like it. I like it. Great step.
Okay. I, I got a few questions. On, on, on page four of sixteen, you have, there's various exceptions that can be requested and other portions of the county code, which is not nearly restricted. What, I mean.
That's just talking generally, like, the, the exception that's currently in the road standard deviation site is very limiting, like I talked about. It's only when a subdivision submitted in conjunction with a planned development permit application and a homeowners association is going to be created, which is in charge of the maintenance and road construction. That's extremely limiting. There, that will never happen in this county, almost never. I mean, I wouldn't say never, but very, very uncommon.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a little bit more friendly that.
We're trying to make it more, so in case there is some case we don't foresee, it, it gives applicants an option. Right now, it's just, there's, it's a hard no. If they don't have all those conditions, it's, sorry. So we're trying to make it more broadly based.
Okay.
That is our goal. We're trying to make it user-friendly.
Okay, and then, um, in your, in your diagrams that they're supposed to, to follow, I don't, I don't see diagram number two. You have one, three, four, and five, but you don't have two in there, so.
That would be correct, yeah. I don't know why that didn't make it in there.
I will definitely get that in there. Yeah, that, gotta admit it for some reason.
All right. And then the other question I had is on, on your, on your number two for the, for the road, for the road width, it, it's narrowed down to, to twenty-two foot. You know, on a, on some that are serving more than ten parcels, you have a forty-foot width, and then, and then these are serving ten or less, but it's on a paved road, and it's twenty-two foot wide. But I'm just concerned about, with it being paved, you know, people want to go faster on, on a nice, smooth road, you know? Is that, I mean, should we have that in there, or?
These were standards that have been in place for a long, long time for Public Works, and so I just carried these forward. I did update the diagrams. And last time, we did increase the rideaway width, but we did not change any of the particulars. I asked Public Works for comment on that, and I got nothing, so I just kept it the same. So I don't really have any, I'm not a Public Works guy. I, I just kept what was in place. It is a twenty-two-foot wide road with two-foot shoals on each side. I'm not an engineer, so I don't know if that's adequate or not.
That said, I know Don worked with Public Works on this, so the lack of comment is sort of an endorsement of what has been tried and true.
Well, he tried to get a lot of comments.
Because he reviewed it, said he had no comment or suggested changes, so he was satisfied with it.
Right. All right, it just, it just seems odd to me, but, you know, I'm not bad.
I'm not an engineer either, and this is what's been in place for decades, too. We've had this seem to work, so.
I don't want to regret, I don't think it's much worth twenty-three.
Three inches.
Yeah. Well, I mean, just to narrow it down and, 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 provided road. Okay, that's, that's all I have. Okay, now we'll open up the public hearing at ten thirty-eight. Is there anybody against this? Okay, is there anybody for this? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back up here for a vote.
You need a motion?
And, yep.
I'll make a motion to receive the report, conduct a, a public hearing. Fine introduction of the proposed ordinance is exempt from California Environmental Quality Act SEQA pursuant to SEQA guidelines, subsection one-five-zero-six-one-B, and introduce and waive the first reading.
With the addition of the one sentence of the hourly rate?
Yes. Sorry about that.
Okay, motion made by Supervisor Bridges, second by Supervisor Alba.
Roll call vote, please.
Okay. A, I, I just remembered one more question I had. A, on that, uh.
Just when you thought you were.
On the, on that road maintenance agreement between landowners on, on the dirt roads. So if, if somebody wants to do that now, can, can those landowners come to the building department and get, and, and get some sort of agreement?
We have the.
You know, of, of, of what, what's already existing, so that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that they could, go ahead, go ahead and do that, have it recorded, but if it wasn't a condition of the subdivision, then it would be on them to enforce it, which it already is, really.
Yeah. Okay, so.
If, if two people want to impose conditions upon each other privately in a recorded document, we can give them the bones.
Well, I, I didn't know, I mean, you know, we all are getting comments on, on bumpy roads.
Right.
And so if, if that was something that would, would help them.
Yeah, do you agree?
I do. I don't know if you have to have at least fifty percent of the owners sign that. I don't know if it's like majority, or I'm not sure the rules on that, but I would think it'd at least be half of them, you know? Because there's gonna be opposition, there always is.
Well, there's always people that just don't participate anyway. So you can take them to court if that's what you want, but.
This is why we want to do it now, because we want to, when these parcels are created, we want something in place, because it gets harder, because we have all kinds of things like this in the county, where.
It's taken care of ahead of time.
Exactly.
Yeah, well, I just, just, you know, if, if there, if this was an option that we could, you know, when our constituents come and say that we got a bumpy road.
We can truly.
Here's an option for you and your fellow landowners to take care of.
It's nothing that we can impose after the fact.
Right. It can truly provide the form, but that's about it.
Okay. Yes.
I'm gonna ask the man, do we need to go back and amend our motion again to include the, the number two diagram, because it was in there?
That's typographical, essentially, it's clerical.
We'll provide it on the second reading. Where you have.
Yeah, yeah, it'll come back to you in that, and that's, you can still adopt it.
Okay. So it was Supervisor Bridges that made the motion, Supervisor Alba seconded, and now we are going to have a roll call vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Scanlon?
Yes.
Supervisor Bridges?
Yes.
Supervisor Alba?
Aye.
Supervisor Ingram?
Aye.
Supervisor Neely?
Yes. Okay, we're going to move to D one, and do we need to take a?
It's fine with me, just if I can let staff get their presentation together.
Okay. A good idea? Okay, great idea.
Great idea.
All right, we'll bring the meeting back to order, and we're going to go to D one, the building vision. Demonstration. Galen, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Galen Orwood, Planning and Building Services Department. So since last October, we've had an online building permit portal to where over-the-counter building permits could be issued remotely. This has been working really well, not just with contractors, but landowners in North County and South County that, it's a drive for them to come in and get a building permit. I've been using it successfully, and it's been working. So we'll see, we want to do demonstrations. It's kind of hard to demonstrate this way, but we wanted to do it, do our best, kind of demonstrating how it works for you, so you can see it. But it is successful. We are getting feedback on it, and people seem to like it and appreciate it. So anyway, I was gonna, I have Dana Lee, Dana, and Matt are gonna give a demonstration, and if you have any questions, just speak up and let us know. So I'll turn it over to, to the team.
Okay, so Dana is going to.
Can you state your name?
Dana Lee Rodriguez.
Thank you.
Dana is going to demonstrate from the applicant standpoint for submitting an application. So the easiest way to find it is to go to our website, and they would go to the planning and building page. And then, once they're there, they're going to scroll down, and there's the online portal Just takes them to the portal. At this point, this is where they would sign up to create a portal. It's fairly simple to do. They're just gonna have their email and basic information. Dana has her set up already, so, yeah. So she's gonna log in. So she's gonna log in. I was gonna, just a little information, so as Galen said, we've been using it since October. We've done close to ninety applications so far using this, and we've had really good feedback from contractors and homeowners. So at this point, they've created their portal, they're gonna start an application. You go to apply. There's a drop-down menu where they would select the type of permit that they want to do once they get under building permits. For these purposes, we're gonna do a mechanical permit.
But can you read that, that's a little hard for me to read, can you read those and I'll put categories here?
Yeah, so we have a cargo container, an electrical, mechanical, plumbing, roofing, and siding. Those are what we're allowing right now. We are going to start accepting solar permits through this. Is that a little better?
Yeah.
Sorry?
Make it one bigger.
One bigger?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Oh.
Super seen nothing, yeah.
Oh, there you go. Look at it, I can see it.
Super sized it.
Okay. Mechanical, here we go. So at this point, you can start typing the address of the parcel that you want the permit for, and it will pop up a list of addresses. Usually, most addresses come up in here. For some reason, it doesn't, people usually call us and say they can't find their parcel, and we'll help them locate it.
Not every parcel has an address.
Right. So this is just a welcome page, kind of giving them a rundown of what to expect when they're using the portal. So at this point, they're gonna start their application. It has some of the information pre-populated form based on their parcel number. So at this point, it has their address, the parcel number, where it says, give your project a name. We usually want the homeowner's name there, but if they don't, we can always change it on the backend once we complete the application. This is where they would put the purpose of their project. Wishful thinking. Save it. This will take you now to the next section, which is gonna be the contact. Everything there should be accurate. If for some reason it's not, they can add a contact under the add a contact. But it should for the most part be accurate. Under contractor, this is where if a contractor's the one submitting, the information should be there already. If it's a homeowner submitting, they can add a contractor if they're using one. If not, they're gonna click on that, and it gives you instructions right here telling you that if you're the property owner, that you're gonna click on that, and... Over here, yeah. You're gonna type owner builder. And do I click that? The top one? Mm-hmm. Okay. And then you're gonna add it to your permit. Once that's done, that lets us know that it's a property owner, so at this point, we would go in and ask them to upload a couple forms that we require for property owners. Just verifying that it's them along with a picture of their driver's license. This is where we ask for certain details, we require them to put in a phone number so that we can contact them. We obviously have their email already, you don't have to fill that part out. They're gonna mark if they're the authorized agent, and then enter a project value. Anything over a thousand dollars, they have to give us a form that State of California requires for smoke detectors and carbon monoxide in the home. So then we would also ask them to upload that form. All the forms that we ask of them are on the front page of the portal. When Dana's done, we can go back and show you where they can find those. At this point, the parcel should be accurate, so it's gonna be marked done. It's gonna give them the fee, it won't tell them the fees yet, but once we go in and we accept it on our end, that's when the fees will populate. So I'll go in here and accept it. Did you say it, Dana? I don't know. Yeah. Here we go, sorry.
Can I ask one question? So when the... When the person's doing that, and they get to that point, then... How long does it take for you guys to accept it, or are you monitoring the system all the time?
It comes, it's set up to where it sends me an email alert, so I'm constantly getting emails letting me know when a new application comes in. And so we usually try to get to it within a couple hours, but it's usually approved the same day, if not the next day.
But the person would have to stop at that point in time?
Correct.
Until... Until you have time to...
Accept it.
To go through this part?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So at this point, it comes into me, I would go in and accept it. And under Dana's portal, she can see down at the end, if you scroll down to the bottom, under the approval steps. It'll show her, if she refreshes her screen, it should show that it's been accepted for completeness review. I would route it to the planning department for them to do their approved part. Once they approve it, then it comes back to building for the appropriate person to approve it as well.
So it's gonna take a couple of days, or whatever, to go through you, and then go through planning, and then go through the building inspector? Is that who was on the bottom?
Yes, so...
Is that correct?
Usually, something simple like this, that someone can come into the counter and get it, you know, and wait for us to do it, we can usually have it approved the same day. It's just, it would take maybe a few hours for, like I said, for planning to review it, once they approve it, then it comes back to the building side, then we approve it. And throughout the whole process, the applicant is getting email alerts, letting them know where it's at and where it's, if it's been approved. So normally, it doesn't take more than two days to get an application through the system, and that's really saying, I mean, that's pushing it. I would say usually the same day we can have it approved.
Well, yeah, I mean, a couple of days.
Yeah, no, it normally doesn't take that long.
Just trying to figure out when I apply.
So at this point, they should have gotten an alert telling them that it's approved, and that they can pay. For demonstration purposes, we're not gonna put the fees in and go through that, but if you scroll down.
I have a question.
Sure.
And you said, then they can pay, can they pay online, or they need to...
Yeah, so there will be, it'll show them the fee that's gonna be due. There's a link that takes them to PayGov that they can pay right there, and once they pay it, it automatically issues their permit.
Okay, is that with credit card or debit either?
Yeah.
Or, okay, thank you.
So PayGov, you're paying the state, and the state reimburses us?
PayGov, it's a third-party site that we use. The fees, I don't know how that works exactly, but it goes into, I think, an account once we get an alert from the assessor's office? Auditor. Auditor, yeah, then we issue the receipt, that way we know.
So I'm not paying the state of California?
No.
No, it's... Why, do you want it?
It's just...
No, I don't want it.
We're a room-oriented platform.
So at this point, they would have paid, the permit would be issued. Once it's issued, we send it to them via DocuSign for signatures, because we still want a signature on the permit. So it goes to the planner to sign, comes to whoever's authorized it on the building side to sign it, and it goes to the homeowner as well to sign it, or the contractor. Once it's signed, then we get an alert letting us know that it's been signed, we download it, save it, print it for the assessor's office as well. And then they also have a copy of it for their records, the homeowner. They can also, once they've got their permit issued, they can schedule inspections through here. Usually, there's gonna be two inspections, so this is when they would schedule the inspection. Oh, maybe I have to refresh. You can now. Oh, wait, it says issue my permit. I've gotta do that. Okay, or not, maybe because I didn't upload my things, okay, there we go. Your issue. So now it says issued. You can scroll down. Perfect. So it tells them how many inspections are gonna be required, they can schedule it. When they schedule it, the inspector gets an email alert letting them know that they have an inspection request. They set it up or approve it, they still call the applicant and let them know if that time's gonna work, or if they're gonna have to kind of rearrange it to coordinate it. Once he goes out and inspects it, they get an alert as well.
I've got a quick question, if you do this online, does the inspector bring the orange permit thing that you're supposed to have posted? That you normally get when you go upstairs, or?
No.
What does that look like?
Um, they're not necessarily required, that's just for people to know that there's been a permit, you know, issued and approved. You know, a lot of roofers like that, because people don't know if there's a permit or not. It's not a required document to have on the site though.
We like that, but we haven't really worked through a way to make that happen online. If the homeowner really wants one, they can come get one, and if a neighbor has concern, they can call and ask if there's a permit, so. That's the one thing that is not perfect about this, but I'm just one that really loves a card. Because I feel the complaints when people say, do they have a permit, and so I like to have the card, but... Work in progress, but anyway, I don't wanna get in front of more questions. I do have some comments.
So go ahead and leave, click it in comments too, in case there's any, yeah, if there's like a gate code or anything like that.
Or they wanna say how much they really appreciate staff, it's a good place, big thank you.
So at this point, Matt gets his alert.
It's all set up, Mr. Stanley. So we can show them via the inspection calendar.
So Matt's gone in and approved the inspection. If you go to your homepage. Oh, okay, sorry. Go, go. Scroll down. Right here, it has the calendar for the inspections, so people can go here, if they have a portal, and see what inspections are scheduled for the day. Where they're at on the calendar, and then they also can see like previous days, what inspections have been done and completed. It doesn't give them all the information of the permit per se, but it'll tell them where they're at on the schedule, and if it's been approved or denied once it's been inspected. So Matt's gonna have to approve it. Say for instance, if for some reason it wasn't approved, they get a disapproved notice in their portal, and it would let them know why it was disapproved, or what corrections need to be made. So that they can do that and then request a reinspection.
Quick question on that, if they have to have another inspection, is there an extra charge on that?
We allow for two, if it goes more than that, then there is a reinspection.
Okay.
Approved, and then there's attachment. So this gives them the inspection results that they can print for their records if they want to. And I think that's it, if you want to go back to the homepage, we can show them where the documents are. Right here is where they would find the documents that we would, if for some reason they had certain stuff that applied to this, and we let them know they needed documents. They're all right here for them to access fairly easily, and they're all fillable documents, so they could fill them online if they wanted to. Most of them for these type of permits would only need to do probably a property owner package and a... The smoke detector and, yeah, smoke alarm form.
So if you're on that, and we'll just say you're in off Richmond Road where there's a different set of standards, or Westwood. When you go through that and you pick that, is it gonna give you specific for your area, or is it gonna give you the whole general plan list things? Is this narrowed down, or do you have to read through everything to find what section you're looking for, for Westwood or Richmond, wherever?
For documents that you're gonna need?
Or some of the regulations, like the snow load for root.
So that kind of stuff, we have it on the website where they can look at snow load, but most people do still call in and ask for it. We do let them know that there is a snow load map on our website, that they can access it. But we don't have the design criteria yet on here because we're not accepting building permits that with plans for...
But you see what I'm saying though, I mean, is it, because you put in your parcel numbers, is it gonna break down the general plan requirements to that parcel, or is it just the whole thing?
General plan requirements.
I mean, never did plan.
At this time, sir, though, it's specifically for ones that wouldn't require designated areas, like a mechanical inspection. It doesn't matter where you are in Lassen County, that's a blanket inspection or application rather. And so things where you would need snow load, or you might have a design review, say Westwood, those areas, those would require plans submitting into the building department. So that, this isn't yet to that point yet, so it wouldn't break it down. These are ones that would be a general across-the-board application and...
Right, thank you, there are questions.
Any other question?
So I just wanna take a moment to appreciate these folks, because they've been working on this for over a year, well, really more. Galen and I, several years ago, said, gosh darn it, we wanna move into the 21st century. And, you know, and so, and this is happening in most jurisdictions, and so we really put that task to Dana and Dana Lee, and Mike and Matt. And they've been working on this a long time now, and it's been really successful. And I know while this isn't like going to Amazon and ordering shoes, because it's a little more complicated than that. But it still provides a really great opportunity for people that don't live near here, that can't just pop in. And I know that they are going to expand upon this as much as they can, and hopefully someday we can do anything through this portal. But I just wanna commend these folks for giving me...
I agree, that looks pretty simple, you know me, I'm not very good with computers. I might almost be.
You might have to call Dana Lee to get which button.
Have to get your wife to turn it on.
Excellent job, my staff, really, yeah.
Thank you, guys.
I've got a quick question. You mentioned about the inspection, you know, the print placard? If they're getting an email, or, you know, they're getting this all set up, maybe that could prompt them to mail, spam mail a...
Yeah.
Orange card and maybe the inspection checklist, or whatever paperwork, your copies up via...
Yeah, certainly, I know they're working on solutions, so a lot of these permits are pretty fast. So like, once they're issued, it happens pretty quickly, whereas like, if somebody's doing a remodel or constructing something, and everybody's seeing it, you know, that card is a great way to demonstrate that you've done all the right things. This has a different time, a temporal aspect, but yes, that's one solution, and I'm sure they're working on others.
Good job.
Quick question, you guys have did ninety-two successfully since October?
We've done just about ninety, yeah.
What percentage compared to people going to the desk, to people doing it online, are you guys seeing since October?
Um, we still have a lot of people coming into the counter, but I don't think a lot of people know that we're doing it through the portal. So we've been letting them know as they do come in, especially contractors, that they're able to do it, and... And I've had a few in the last few months that didn't know. And when I told them, they're now utilizing the portal.
So when we started, we kinda picked some guinea pigs to help see where the shortcomings might be and what's good, what's bad. And so that's just kinda snowballed. And now, I imagine, all the contractors that work in these specific permits will wanna do this. It's just a really great time saver. And more and more, the average person might wanna do so, too, especially those that live in North County or South County. Yeah, I was just thinking, what would be a good way to get the word out to state builder owner? People that wanna... This is it, right, Sam? Right, Amanda?
Yep.
There you go.
And I have had people call in and, you know, say, "Oh, can I email it?" And then I tell them, "Have the portal." And I've had quite a few homeowners that email it up, like you said, North County, have used it. And if they have problems, they'll call. I've had elderly people that keep walking through it, just walking through it. "Oh, that was easy." So it's getting out there.
So Mike, on a building inspector's perspective, do you like it?
You bet.
All right.
The less contact I have to have with the applicant, the better.
Said the guy about to retire. And on that note, anyways, I would like to introduce Matt Schwartz, who is our newest addition to our building team. He's been really great to work with and has a lot of background in the field. And he's gonna be a very important component of the building department or division in the future. So I wanted to give you that.
Welcome.
And then the other thing is, is would the well drillers be able to go to this portal and get on there someday?
I think that's our goal, is to eventually have all the permits, to be able to utilize the system. Because not only is it good for the applicant, but it's kind of useful for us because we're not having to do so much interaction with the public. It kind of eliminates that. So it kind of fits both of us, really.
Sounds like a win-win for everybody.
Yeah.
Okay, no more questions? Anybody from the public wanna... Okay, great job, guys.
Twenty-first century.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Now, Bill, cure cancer.
Okay, we're gonna move on to F1, committee appointments.
Mr. Chairman, as you know, when you made last the two appointments for Trindell and Prism, you nominated Sam McMullen and Regina Shap. That made sense. I was the interim at the time. I recommend that you assign me the responsibility with Sam being the alternative.
For both, I would agree.
For both, yes.
I would agree. I would make that motion.
I will second it.
Okay, motion made by Supervisor Alba, seconded by Supervisor Bridges. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Any comment up here? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we're moving on to G, information and consent calendar.
I'd like to pull G1, please.
Okay, G1. Anything else? Uh, G3. G3. And G2.
You pulled the key.
Yeah. So with that, your... All right.
Second.
Okay, Supervisor Alba made the motion. Supervisor Bridges. Anybody from the public wanna comment? Seeing none. Bring it back up here for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes for Renaming Bell. Okay, G1.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a minor correction on my unadvised report on that date. I attended the Honey Lake Valley Recreation Authority meeting, not the Big Valley Recreation Authority.
Okay.
That's all. And with that, Kathy, name correction, spelling change for Kathy Bannister. I talked about it. I correct spelling.
Okay. Anything else?
With that, I'd make a motion approved. There's the minutes on that date.
All right. Supervisor Scanlon made the motion. Supervisor Alba seconded. Anybody from the public? Okay, seeing none. Bring it back up here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So for G2, Brandon.
I'll save you all any speeches. What questions do you have?
I'm sorry, Brandon, can you stay tuned for the record?
Brandon Roy, Public Health Director. Thank you, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Tell us a little bit about this program. Why Santa Cruz?
That is a good question. Do not have a good answer for that one. That's just, they help with a lot of the counties up in the north that are smaller to submit a lot of their Medicaid billing.
So this is just to help with the billing?
Essentially, we bill through Santa Cruz so we can get reimbursed for a lot of our activity usage. I don't know why we can't do it ourselves. However, a lot of people just go through Santa Cruz. I assume it's similar to a lot of our other regional things, having multiple smaller counties together. Gives us a little more pull so we don't get pushed around by the state as much.
Is this a moneymaker for them? I mean, are they skimming off the top on this or how's that?
Samantha, well, WCAO. So what we do with this MAH program is we go out as a county and do Medi-Cal related services. This allows our staff that aren't traditionally Medi-Cal servicers to get reimbursed for their time. So we have probation in this, we have veteran services, and we have lots of other HSS departments. These guys are just working as a hub. We've been working with Les, who's our main consultant for MAH, for twelve, thirteen years since I've been as a county. So we have a contract with them to prepare our billing reports for us, but no, they don't get anything on top of that. There's a contract in place for us to do this type of work. This is the only compensation that they get. And we bring in a lot of money. Like, I believe last year probation probably brought in sixty to eighty thousand dollars that they wouldn't have brought in otherwise.
Public health is about five hundred thousand last year and about three hundred thousand the year before that.
So with that money brought in, that pays for the contract that we have with them?
Public health takes the majority of that contract. The other departments that get it, they largely just benefited from it with nondiscretionary money. They're just getting reimbursed for the services that they did. It's been very beneficial for these other agencies to be able to sign in and be a part of it.
So they just piggyback off of this contract?
Yeah, it all goes through one hub and then public health distributes all of that money back out to the relevant departments. So it comes in, we pay the contract, and then it gets distributed out.
And which departments use Santa Cruz?
Oh, we just use Santa Cruz as our hub. So all the departments are using MAH-related activities, and that's probation. We've looked at expanding it more into public safety. We have veteran services. And then all of the other HSS departments that are not traditionally MAH or Medi-Cal servicers are able to be able to get money back, to be reimbursed. So you have public health, you have wraparound, you have behavioral health is already a Medi-Cal servicer. Housing probably can, so it just kinda depends. And it goes everything from direct case management to transportation, to coordination of programs. So even admin can build into that.
And the funds that fund this 110 is state money that's given to HSS? Or how's it funding source to pay the contractor to be able to get that?
There's a funding pool out there at the state level that we are then claiming our timing is to be reimbursed back. It's one of the many time studies that we have. So we also have other time studies that we use.
What's Santa Cruz getting out of it? It seems like it's a very nice service they're providing for us to utilize, but how's it benefiting them?
Just this contract. A lot of, what you find out in a lot of the HSS stuff, though my phone's getting blown up by all of my HSS people telling me that there's so much more that goes into this. As you can tell, Brandon and I clearly should not have been the people here to do this. But what I can say is that what we find out, as someone who started the, like, really worked to start the wraparound program in Lassen County almost thirteen years ago, is that most counties pool their resources together. As these things come out and they're introduced, we don't know what to do. So other counties join in together and we all kinda navigate it together. We all use this one hub and one person to kinda spearhead and we all kinda jump on board. And that has been very, very helpful, especially for small rural counties, to have the bigger counties that are kind of like going to pave the way and learn it for us, for us to be able to jump on and be able just to get the benefit. So that is how I understand this to have come around.
Cool, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to approve the agreement with the county of Santa Cruz and authorized to see your empty [inaudible].
One second.
Okay, there's no dollar figure attached to this agreement? It's up on here? There's no dollar amount? Or am I...
You are correct, yes. It depends on how much we do for billing and how many different activities. Our time studies really largely dictate how this will change throughout the year.
So we don't know how much this contract is costing us with all the dollar figure on there? Is that right or what?
They're kinda basing on the claims.
Right, exactly. So they get a share of that piece of the claims. So it says on the...
Okay, so they're taking a percentage?
Yeah, the LGA should be assessed an annual participation fee, calculated as the LGA's proportionate share of the LGA consortium's approved current fiscal year budget. And then it says will be calculated as the actual MAA and TCM revenue received by DHCS, by the LGA during the prior fiscal year. So it's on that last page is how they're calculating that.
So, and is that twenty percent or fifty percent or...
My understanding, in the previous year, it's been twenty percent.
Okay, so they're taking twenty percent of what is owed to the county?
Correct.
It's according to testimony, it's a lot more than they would receive if they...
Yeah.
Got it. Okay, so Supervisor Alba made the motions. Supervisor Scanlon seconded. Anybody from the public wanna comment on this? Okay, seeing none. Bring it back up here for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. We're moving on to G3.
John McGarvis, Sheriff, Coroner. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have regarding this data sharing agreement.
Why are we sharing data?
This is an inter-sharing data between all of the county agencies. So let's say that you, hopefully this never happens, but you are about to get out of jail. And we start working through the process of getting you through CalAe and we have interactive and we have all these things regarding wraparound services, things that we have to provide for you. So we fill out your application at the jail. So if we didn't have data sharing, next year, your next stop is CalWorks or Wraparound App or one of the other agencies. You get to fill out that information again. And then you go to probation and you get to fill it out again. So the point of the data sharing is, is now all of these agencies will have collaborative access to this information through Equivalent, which is a company we already use for electronic monitoring and risk assessments. So basically, it saves you as the person time for having to recomplete all these applications and, you know, everybody, we can all have access to help facilitate the needs of the community better, quicker, and more efficiently.
Well, I gotta say, I gotta disagree with this a little bit because now we're spending taxpayer dollars for degenerates who are already penetrating on society anyway. And so, you know, we're just enabling them more to make it easier for them. I mean, they're the ones that screwed up, dropped the tax.
So we have to do this. This program happens and we spend money on it, no matter how we do it. We're actually spending more money if we don't do this because then we're taking time out of public health, public, you know, CalWorks, probation, behavioral health, all these other agencies. We're now spending more employee time, more staff time, more processing time for each of these applications instead of allowing for this to do. This money came through the CalAe grant, which was a couple million dollars we had gotten a couple of years ago. So this is our, this is funding that we're getting through grants anyway. So that we're back, we're gonna be spending that money to reimburse for this. Whether we think we should spend money on this or not, the fact of the matter is, we're state mandated to do it.
Actually, sort of, there's some funding.
Yes.
Or this mandate.
And we are, the funding we got was specifically to put these things in place, things like IT infrastructure, which Travis has helped us with. All of these things are meant as part of that law and it was passed as AB 133 a few years ago. We're mandated to do them. They've given us the money to implement the project. If we don't implement the project, they're gonna say, "We gave you the money and you did nothing with it." So while there's parts of your sentiment that I can't say I disagree with, the fact of the matter is, is this is better for the community in the long run to be able to facilitate these resources faster so that those of us that work, everybody that works for us can focus their efforts more efficiently. So it actually is, it is a positive for the county to get this done. Sorry, Supervisor Scanlon, you have your hand.
Oh, no, I was just thinking the same thing. Even though it does benefit the...
Incarcerated persons in society.
Justice involved individual. It benefits the sheriff's department and the rest of the county employees.
It actually saves my staff a ton of time. It'll save probation, behavioral health, all of our county agencies. It will save us time by not having to redo the same work over and over and over again.
So you guys are actually the ones that are...
In the long run, yes.
Well, I gotta guess that it's both the person leaving the jail as well because if they have to make all these different pit stops to get to where they need to go and they have limited means, their success is probably gonna be curtailed. And so putting them out of the door after they have received their punishment with the best foot forward.
And studies have shown this very thing that CAO's talking about. Studies have shown again and again that when you don't have services or they're not prepared to return to the community and like, if they have limited resources, they may only be able to go to so many places in a day. And some people just say, "I'd give up." And then they go back to what they were doing before, which lends them back in my jail and increases recidivism by not giving them the opportunity to succeed. Am I gonna say this can be a hundred percent successful? No, I would never say that. But it does give people the best opportunity possible, leaving the jail, to succeed with the resources in place. And it benefits the county because we're able to provide these resources and use our time more efficiently as well.
And by then doing this, if they don't get out into Lassen County... And by then doing this, if they don't get out into Lassen County, this information will go to the county that they get released to?
Yes, so we have to coordinate with other counties as well. Now, right now, we're not housing any outside inmates. So we're not housing Shasta County inmates or anything else. But each county was required to implement these programs and they were supposed to be in place by October of last year.
But what if the...
This year, sorry. Sorry, go ahead.
Are we still housing the women inmates for Plumas County?
So we haven't had to do that very often. It's been kind of hit and miss. But either way, Plumas is actually responsible for coming and taking care of those things themselves. So if they would be in charge, their county would come and do that. Or if we had Shasta County inmates or anything else. CDCR has their own program. They stand up for those that parole out of their facilities. Everybody had to do this as part of the passage of AB 133.
So that's Plumas County's problem?
Yes, it is. We're not spending our county resources, and maybe I wasn't, I'm sorry, I wasn't very clear on that. We're not spending our county resources on other county's inmates.
What happens to Thomas' point if somebody had DUI driving, who lived in Shasta County, who's driving through Susanville, they did all their court stuff here, their jail time here, Susanville, but they're gonna go back to Shasta?
We'll coordinate with their, with their county. We would take the information and forward it to their services. They may not have the same data sharing thing we have, but email still works and the mail's still good, so.
Okay, so it goes that way?
Yes, we could do it that way.
So, and, and this is a thing to update your current system, correct?
To allow it to do the data sharing, yes. It puts the link in place to be able to do those things. If you're gonna look for technical explanation, I'm gonna point to Travis because I'm gonna just confuse everybody if I go to explain it. But it basically allows everything to talk to each other so we can facilitate the programs.
So, so it, or it talks to, to probation and everything?
Yes.
Everybody that...
This covers the cost of building those data links. And I do know that those come at a cost with having, you know, we have obviously other systems that have to talk to, like we have our RMS system, records managed systems that have talked to court systems, that have talked to DA's office. All of those data links have to be built and there's a cost to that. That's basically what we're paying for. Here's the ability. This is a lot of links to build into a network with people who all use different types of things.
And they're going to be doing it in a remote, from a remote location to, to get into our, our system?
Well, Tiffany would be a good example. She could log in from her desk and be, and be able to access this information through the portal.
But the contractor is, is using it through a remote location to get into our system?
Travis stating Lassen County ISD. With this contract, it is all, all the data is housed in the cloud. So it's an Amazon warehouse basically, or it's a massive data center that houses all of our data. So anyone in any of these departments can go and access that data, but it's not stored in our county. And it doesn't have direct access to any of our county's equipment or sites. So what we're doing is, we upload, we basically create an application in the cloud, and they're connecting specific links back to certain agencies that already have their stuff also hosted in the cloud. So for instance, if we have probation, for instance, their data management system is also in the cloud and we work with both of those vendors to create that connection. It's not something where we have to constantly have someone login and access. It's something to where that data gets transmitted once that basically highway is created. So there's not a constant like, oh, this contractor's gotta come in and access all our data every day. And it's not something to where you have to be based on location. It'll have specific logins for all of our county staff that need to have access to that information.
And, and the people are guaranteeing that, that it's all going to work right?
Yeah, so part of that is when we build out this application, is to make sure all those links work correctly. And we'll be testing those, as well as the Amazon data warehouse. That one, there's requirements and stipulations with the SLA, which is a service level agreement, on how and when those servers are available and their uptime. So with, usually with data centers like that where it's Amazon or it's Microsoft, their uptime's are 99.9%. Not 100%, but they usually do it to where your application very, very rarely goes down. And it's a lot more secure than if it was housed on our equipment here onsite.
All right. And when it says they're gonna go live, we're not paying them until we're 100% up and running?
Well, once the, once we go through the whole process and we get all those links per the scope of work that is, should be in that contract, once that scope of work has been completed and we've verified everything, then we issue our payment. That's generally how it works. Unless they request enough front for like travel and stuff if they had to come onsite. But I don't believe that is in this contract.
No, they don't have...
It should all be public.
Everything's been done remotely.
Yeah, so they won't have, it'll be...
But when they say go, go live, I wanna make sure that when we go live, that it's up and running. And that's, that's what we're paying them for.
Yeah, and that would be the biggest part is verifying all our connections are done and completed. And we'll have a checklist of what should have been done and making sure that it's been completed before we issue payment.
The only other thing I had was, on all of the, on the amounts, I wasn't able to come up with the 169. You have 24, you have 119, 49. And, and so I, I don't know, it, it's, what the, what the amount should be? Or is that just not to exceed?
Should be a not to exceed. We always build a little bit extra just in case something happens and the change order comes or costs go up or different things.
So that, that figure is not to exceed?
Yes.
Got it. Any more questions? Anybody from the public want to comment?
Hi, I'm Tiffany. I'm from Behavioral Health Department. And I just wanted to reiterate what the sheriff is saying, that it's super important for us to start this data sharing journey. We've been in it for about two years now with other entities such as Banner, such as other hospitals. Being able to really precisely look at the data and see, are we doing a good job? Are we really handling these clients that are coming in and out of these entities? Some of them go back into more entities than others, but it's nice to be able to share the data immediately and say, hey, why does this person keep going back into the jail? What can we do to hopefully resolve some of these issues before they go back into the jail? So one of the things that we've been doing through the CalA initiative is that we started a kind of a hybrid where we're actually, behavioral health is going to the jail before the 90-day pre-release to do their registration and their mental health assessment. That information is crucial for us to be able to exchange information back and forth. And that's that data sharing portal that we would be able to use for that. The nice thing is, is that once we have that person with the registration and the behavioral health assessment, even before they leave, we already know who this individual is. We already know what their needs are. What we're trying to do is see if we can keep them from keep going back into the jail. And if we can immediately start services, get them that appointment, here's your appointment with your therapist, you've got everything set up. All you need to do is show up to behavioral health and we take it from there. What we wanna show the state is outcomes with this data sharing. And seeing that this is actually viable, it's actually working, and it's actually benefiting the public at the service. So I just wanted to share that because I know it's hard with CalA and other initiatives, what we actually do. But I think it's actually, it's gonna work. I think it's gonna hopefully help our, help our community that we have. That's it.
Thanks. No, you're good. Thank you.
This is Mr. Albon.
You know, I just wanna say kudos to staff. I mean, we've had the planning and building into the survey. You've had Sam, on the last topic, and the other fellow, and now you've got Tiffany, Sheriff. I mean, these guys have changed my mind a couple different times today. So kudos to them. I mean, seriously, you guys look at their information. It's just not cursory reading. I just want to say thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I have to add to that a little bit too, because you're always looking towards the future and what's best for the county and how you can save taxpayer dollars. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep. Thanks for, you know, I mean, we received a grant for this money. And, and so it, is the grant almost used up?
So actually, we, we just got it. We're starting to tap into it over the last, probably about the last year, right?
Yeah, correct.
So we're really starting to, really start to get the infrastructure in place to start spending the money and things. There was a little bit of holdup on spending for a period of time. We've gotten those things cleared up. And now we've been trying to, we've already started to build some of the, this is for the data. We've already done some projects inside the jail regarding trying to get infrastructure in place there. We're working with IT on improvements for, to meet some of the other requirements that CalA requires, that CalA has established when it comes to being able to meet with these, you know, people by interview or privacy considerations and all of these other, there's a ton of stuff that goes with this. This is one piece. It's a vital piece, but it's one piece of a much larger puzzle.
Okay, that's all done. Anybody from the public have anything? Okay, I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the addendum to the software license and maintenance agreement with Equivalent and authorize the chairman to execute the addendum.
One second.
Okay, motion made by Supervisor Bridges, seconded by Supervisor Scanlon. All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Opposed?
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to H1.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, fellow board members. Mike Carney, Captain of the Sheriff's Office. This morning, I'd like to talk about a grant opportunity for the Sheriff's Office called the California Highway Patrol Cannabis Tax Fund. A little history behind it is in 2016, California voters voted to pass Proposition 64, which essentially legalized the recreational use of marijuana. With the passage of Prop 64, it mandated the state to set aside funds for the California Highway Patrol to award local agencies grant funding to combat DUI drivers. So this has been going on since 2018. We haven't heard about it. It wasn't really widely advertised. We just heard about it. I have close ties to the local CHP commander. And she, she asked if we're applying for this grant and we'd never heard about it. And so we looked into it. And in February of this year, we applied for the grant. We just recently got notification that we're approved for it. So some of the things we're gonna do with, with the grant funding, it's over $277,000 that we're awarded for a one-year grant cycle. And it's gonna allow us to buy a lot of equipment, which includes a fully outrigged patrol car. It's gonna, it, some drug testing machines and then all the, all the equipment that goes into a sheriff's office car for, you know, past devices to determine blood alcohol content and stuff like that. And then also, we had to build a big budget for it. It's gonna include a lot of training for our staff to recognize DUI drivers, field sobriety tests, all that kind of stuff. And more importantly, it's gonna allow us, we budgeted for 10 saturated patrols. And so what's that's gonna give us is it's gonna be a sergeant, three deputies, and we're gonna deploy them to every area in the county. Like, for example, we'll send them up to North County and have them work a 10-hour shift just looking for DUI drivers. It's gonna show a lot of door. And then we'll do the same with Westwood or in South County and Standish and Janesville and stuff like that. So we're gonna plan for 10 of those throughout the year, as well as we're gonna partner up with the Highway Patrol and work at DUI checkpoint. So it's a great opportunity. There's gonna be a lot of legwork that goes into it. But with, with this grant, the state requires our local governing body to adopt a resolution to accept the grant funds. And so that's why I'm here today to not only explain all that, but I ask that you guys adopt the resolution that allows us to accept the money.
Question? Okay.
So I voted no on Prop 64, but I wasn't allowed to vote yes on this.
If you had to think about it, but yeah, I did too. But yeah, it's, I mean, we're stuck with it now. And so, yeah, and the funding, I don't know if I covered this or not, but the, yeah, so the tax is all, is from local, or not local, but statewide dispensaries. That's where the money comes from. And people go in and buy their medicine or their marijuana or cannabis. Some of the, that's what this tax has come from, is, that's where the money comes from, is the purchase of that from these dispensaries.
I just have a comment. Could you tell your contacts at the CHP office? Thank you.
I will.
So, and, and you're going to buy a, it's just gonna be a, another patrol car or, or just a DUI patrol car?
It's, it's gonna be just a standard Lassen County Sheriff's Office patrol vehicle, outfitted from top to bottom, lights, sirens, radio, cage, decals, just a normal vehicle. But we're gonna assign it to, to a deputy that is gonna basically be heading up the program.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
On this grant, is it appropriate with the county size? I mean, how did they come up with this?
Yeah, so, great question. So they have a larger agency application process and a small agency application process. We fall into the small agency and it's based on the number of officers you have. So there's a, there's a cap, there's a $500,000 cap per agency. So we could've got up to $500,000. But with grants come grant requirements. And so when we were building this budget out, we didn't want to overextend ourselves and say, hey, and ask for the world and not be able to, you know, to deliver what they're looking for. So we met right in the middle and I thought, I thought it was very appropriate to get the, the training and the equipment and everything. I mean, when we were building it, I, I literally tried to think of everything possible that we could outfit these vehicles with and add it to that. And this is the number we, we ended on, so.
Good job.
Thanks.
And this is kind of what you come up with for your...
We, as the Sheriff's Office.
So it's just a one-year grant?
Yep, it's a single year. And it sounds like it's gonna be here to stay. So we're gonna, we're gonna try to get after it every year, for sure. They, they, they were real wanting to know about sustainability, even if the grant funding goes away, you know, are you gonna be able to sustain it? And with, with the equipment that we're asking for, just in this first year, it's gonna be something that we'll be able to do, I think, so.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution. Patrol Cannabis Tax Fund Grant Program.
Okay, Supervisor Scanlon, make the motion. Supervisor Bridges, seconded. Anybody from the public want to comment on it? Okay, seen none. We'll bring it back up here for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, we are moving on to H2. Silas?
Good morning, Silas, for customer services chief. What you have before you today is a grant purchase for a CAT 317 excavator, associated attachments, extended warranty and maintenance package, in the amount of $398,976.07 purchased off the Omnia mass procurement agreement. So we don't have to get bids. No answer, any questions you might have?
I don't have questions, but I've got a comment. I'm very excited about all the work you put into this and how our community can benefit. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Does it come with a masticator or just a bucket?
No, it comes with a standard three-foot bucket, a masticator head with four sets of teeth, replacements teeth, and a rotating grapple. It has the forestry package, auxiliary hydraulic system, the short stick, the heavy counterweight, wide tracks, tall growzers. Everything's line item there, but those are the highlights. 84-month warranty.
I think it's worthy of a Tim Allen, whoa, whoa, whoa. I get to be the first to...
And so, who's gonna, name's gonna be on this and then where does it go after the contract?
So this'll, this'll be owned by the county. It'll belong to my department. Part of the grant agreement is that we need to complete a project with it, with a, and we'll establish the MOU with CalFire. Their operators will transport and operate the equipment on the fuels reduction project that is identified in the grant. At the end of those two years and the completion of the fuels reduction project, it's still property of the county to do with whatever they want. I would like to, after that two-year period, if it went as we expected, consider renewing that MOU to have that same relationship moving forward. But from the day we receive it, forever, it's available to, it's owned by the county. The county, if they have a project they need to use it on, they can come use it and take it for the duration of the project. And there's no questions asked.
Where's this gonna be held?
At least for the first two years. At least for the first two years, I think just logistically speaking, it would make sense for it to reside at a CAL FIRE facility nearest to the fuels reduction project. Because they're going to be servicing it too, they'll be fueling it, doing all the filter changes and oil changes. So I think that makes sense because they have a shop of it, shops available. While it's actively working on a project, it'll probably stay at the project just because logistically moving a 40,000-pound machine can be difficult. But I, I think for those first two years, that would probably make the most sense. Unless the county has a project somewhere, then, you know, it can go to the county yard for whatever is needed. And that just, I've already talked to Pete about this, you know, and that's just a simple call to me and we'll coordinate getting it to where it needs to go.
And you're going to have the CAL FIRE guys to be the ones running it on the fuels reduction projects?
Yeah.
And who can run it if it's a county project?
Sure. Oh, that would be up to Pete, yep, that'd be totally, like, the way I see it working is, you know, this is essentially would be like a road department type asset. And so whoever in, in that department that's authorized to, to run it, and that would be, you know, at the discretion of Pete or Jeff to decide.
And the CAO.
And the CAO.
Isn't this the piece of equipment we discussed a couple months?
Yeah, you guys approved the grant agreement a few, it might have been a month and a half, two months ago. That had to go to the state, get signed, funded, and come back. So if I got the signed grant agreement back from the state, and so then at that point I was allowed to spend the money. So now I'm bringing to you a request to approve the purchase so I can get a PO issued, have the CAO sign it and place the order. I just talked to CAT two weeks ago and they said at this point it probably won't even be here till January. Oddly enough, these are made in Japan.
Point is, you got it over to the finish line.
And so, is, is, are you guys going to train county staff with, with CAL FIRE?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable. So part of the purchase includes delivery and operator training. So I think at that point, we'd coordinate with Pete and have whoever from the county may be operating it be there so they can get the same operator training anyone else would.
And the, and the trailer, isn't there a trailer?
Yeah, that's the next item.
Yeah. All right.
Will the supervisors get a chance to drive it?
Uh, yeah, we might be able to.
Only the CAO. My toy.
All right. So, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase and authorize the county administrative officer to execute the purchase order.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Supervisor Bridges, seconded by Supervisor Scanlon. Anybody from the public want to comment on it? Okay, seeing none, bring it back up here for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, I'll jump ahead to H3, Silas.
Okay, this is the same grant. This is a request to purchase a Landall 345F traveling axle tilt bed trailer. This is, we optioned this, we pretty much got every option they offer for this trailer. It has an onboard hydraulic system, so you don't need a truck with a wet kit. It has a winch, it has the extended neck on it, so you don't have any issues if you're towing it behind. Something like a, like a dump truck that would have a long overhang past the rear axle. It's going to be red in color. These are, these are very popular trailers. It's one of the only tilt bed trailers that has a 50,000-pound payload and that's really why we, we went this direction. A tilt bed trailer is much safer to load heavy equipment on and Landall's about the only one that makes one with a 50,000-pound payload. So that's why we went this route. It's purchased off the Sourcewell Mass Procurement Agreement. Again, we won't, didn't need bids to do this and the total price is $114,324.28.
That blew me away.
Oh, it blew me away too, I was surprised. The base, base for these trailers is $75,000 with no options. And the discount, I don't know if it was on this, it was on my other form, is about $14,000. So this is a, this price reflects a $14,000 discount through the Sourcewell pricing, so the pricey, they're nice trailers though.
It must be.
Well, they are nice, but Chris was talking about police.
Yeah, third, the cost of the excavator.
Yeah. So, and then, and then the county's dump trucks will be...
Yeah, they should be, it's a...
What else with, because it has a pinhole hitch?
Yep, standard pinhole hitch, dump truck should be able to tow it. It, so they, with the extended neck, it goes from a four-foot to a seven-foot. And I know we've been measuring some of our equipment and seven-foot might still be short for some of them. I don't think it'll be an issue for a dump truck, but, but it's going to be the most universal. Rather than going like a fifth wheel or something like that.
So now CAL FIRE are, are they going to use their...
Yeah, they have a, yeah, they won't use, currently all the transports, the tractors they use to pull the dozers around, they're, they don't have pinhole hitches on them because of the, the way the fifth-wheel ramps are shaped on those. So we have a hook truck, I don't know if you're familiar with those. Think, kind of similar to CNS ways when they move a dumpster, they have a, some of their trucks have a big arm that comes down, hooks the front and pulls it up. Similar to that. And that will probably be primarily what's towing it around.
Does CAL FIRE have to purchase that or you got one?
We already have one, yeah, they have a hook truck with a, has a, like a water tender box they can pull on it, a chip box, a flat bed. I forget what else they have for it, but yeah, that'll be. So who's going to run the equipment and move this around? Is they have a heavy equipment operator that's sole purpose is fuels reduction projects. So all day long, he's running a skid steer with a masticator head or a dozer putting in neutral waves for a broadcast burn. This, the project that the excavator and trailer will be used on is just west of Susan Mill and Highway 36. Kind of behind Riverbend and down, following the Highway 36 corridor tying into A1. That ties into a very large Fire Safety Council project that goes up A1. So we're trying to come from Highway 44 and 36 and come east down 36 to A1 and then it'll continue up A1.
Okay. Moving to approve the purchase of offer and the CAO action.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Supervisor Alba, seconded by Supervisor Bridges. Anybody from the public want to comment on this? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back up here for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
And I have to...
See you, Tex.
Okay, we're moving on to H5.
Hello, I'm Tiffany Armstrong, Behavioral Health Director.
So why further than that?
So basically, the way it works is most of our counties, we don't do contracts, we do single case agreements, meaning that if we have a kid that is placed in their county and needs mental health services, they just go ahead, we do a single case agreement, we take their invoices, we pay for the mental health services, except Fresno County, they want a full contract. I don't know why. I was trying to work with Fresno County just to do a single case agreement because we typically don't place kids in that far away. But they were adamant because of the, where their location is, because they have so many other counties next to them, they made it clear that they want a full contract in terms of their, any services or mental health services being provided to any youth that we place there in that county. So unfortunately, we do have to do a full contract with this county, which is not typical. This is very rare. I haven't had one since probably, for probably 10 years. Most counties, we've all agree upon, even in the small rural areas, that we just do single case agreements because if we had to bring 58 county contracts just to provide mental health services, it would be very cumbersome for us as a small county to do that. So like I said, we all know, we might have a kid placed in their county, we might not. We might have a kid placed here from Fresno, we don't know. But for whatever reason, Fresno County is insistent that they want a full contract. And it's basically for them to provide mental health services, and that whatever happens, they would send us the invoice and we would pay it, just like we normally do with any other of the 58 counties.
So this is, basically there's a safety net for you to see have more options.
Yeah, I think they're trying, from my understanding from Fresno, is they're really trying to put perimeters, you know, hopefully that people won't keep placing them in their county.
It's probably a deterrent.
It is a deterrent. But for me, and I try to explain this, for a small county to put a contract together takes a lot of our time. And we have to monitor it and make sure it's, you know, if it has to come up for renewal. But they didn't, they just basically...
They didn't care.
They didn't care, correct. They said, this is our policy, this is what we do. We do full contracts. So that is why I'm here today, is to get the approval for the full contract for this.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, Tiffany, on, so it says maximum amount of $500,000. On, on four, on page four, it says agreement through July 1st through July 30th. I don't know what year that is. And for $3 million.
So that's their contract, and it's for all their counties. So we will never hit $3 million, obviously. But we just had to put a cap for ourselves for our needs. But this is their contract that they have that they give out to all their counties that have to do this. So they're, it's their verbiage, not ours.
So shouldn't there be a year in there that we're, that we're agreeing to in their contract?
It says the term terminates on June 30th, 2027, on page five.
I don't quite understand what's controlling the 500,000 or the $1 million.
Yeah, for us, we would never ever have a kid ever, or any person placed in that county that we would hit $3 million. But we want to make sure we have safeguards not to exceed $500,000. So even though they say we can, you know, bill up to $3 million, we're not. We have to have safeguards on our own part.
So we're putting a limit on ourselves?
Correct.
If it goes beyond that, you can come back to us.
Do not come back to you guys, and I would say we have a problem here. But I don't anticipate us going beyond that $500,000.
Well, it says $15 million during the entire agreement. So $3 million, $15 million.
That's their wording.
Their wording, correct.
And on 14, it says that there's a total max comp for the fiscal year of $100,000.
Yeah.
So that's what we're agreeing to is $100,000. Is that right?
Per fiscal year is the total comp.
Correct.
And then that's, so then this expires on June 30th, end of fiscal year 2027. So it's two years.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with Fresno County and authorize the county administration officer designated to execute the agreement.
Okay, motion made by Supervisor Bridges.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Supervisor Scanlon. All those, anybody from the public? Mrs. Alba? All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we're moving to H6.
You're up, Tiffany.
Tiffany Armstrong, Behavioral Health Director. So this one is again, just a contract that we have that we do renew yearly. We currently have, it's a locum, so it's basically they provide staffing for us when we need it. We currently use one of their staffing to provide medical services or medication services for our clients. So we're renewing their contract again for another year.
Okay, any questions?
It's pretty straightforward.
So you're saying that you're serving diverse populations? What's that?
So anybody who's indigent, who's got Medi-Cal, we don't serve anybody with private insurance, but it could be from veterans to homeless individuals. It's from a large population.
Any questions?
Any other ones? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with North American Mental Health and authorize the county administrative officer or designate to execute the agreement.
Okay, motion made by Supervisor Bridges. Seconded by Supervisor Alba. Anybody from the public? Seeing none, we'll bring it back up here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And Lori, you're up.
Thank you. Real quick, I was invited to go to RCRC in El Turris, and I did attend the last day, Friday. And I want to thank Supervisor Alba for inviting me. And I'm really impressed with the way that group works. And having been planning director for many years and having a group that is sort of similar, I see how strong RCRC is compared to other groups. And so it encourages me to encourage Galen to make that group better and do more things. But thank you for inviting me. It was, it was informative and hopefully not maladified. And then I also wanted to mention, since your big brother, maybe we'll call that little brother, the acorn, I told you very early on, after you guys hired me, that I would be looking into getting this up and serving the citizens of this county. And probably the last five, we've been broadcasting internally to county employees. It's been working fairly well. I want to recognize Travis for his hard work, as well as Sam and the other folks in the IT department. Still a couple snafus here and there, but it's been working. So I wanted to go live today, but we're experiencing a few technical problems that Travis seems to think that we're going to work through. But we are going to start going live, I believe, next meeting. And we will have redundancy with Clerk doing what she's always done until we have a very good comfort level with this working perfectly. So progress, and that's all I have to report, unless you have any questions to make.
How are people going to access that? Will there be a link on the website or something where they can hit, watch live?
Here's Travis.
Travis dating Lassen County IT. So the plan for now is we're going to be hosting it on YouTube. The biggest issue, once we look at storing this data, is first the accessibility on the website. Our website is working, we're working on replacing it to make it more accessible. But YouTube already has all the accessibility features that are needed. So we're going to be sharing a link for the Board of Supervisors meeting on our website, but it's going to be hosted through YouTube, and that's where it'll also be stored. So if anyone from the public wants to go and access those recordings, they have every chance they can to go and access all the recordings, and they'll meet the online ADA requirements.
So is that just to do a search Google for Lassen County?
Yeah, so we'll set up, yeah, so we'll set up like the Lassen County Board of Supervisors channel. That's where it'll be projected. And then all the previous meetings will be listed in there by dates.
Sweet. Good job.
Good job, boys.
Any other questions, Fonny?
Thank you, Travis. He's got nothing else to do.
I know, but not.
I just buggering him right now, but. That's it?
Okay, are we adjourned?
We need to adjourn, and we're supposed to be back here at 1:30, Michelle?
No, no, 1:30 in the admin conference room.
1:30 in the...
That does not apply to the rest of the board. That only applies to the chairman.
Okay.
Okay?